Time should any member of the Board or any resident fail to observe this public charge, the Chair will ask the offending person to leave the meeting until that individual regains personal control. Should decorum fail to be restored, the Chair will recess the meeting until such time that a genuine commitment to the public charge is observed. Commissioner Jacobs, would you like to read the land acknowledgement today?
Thank you. The Board of Commissioners asks its members and residents to conduct them, oh, sorry, as we convene for the Durham County Commissioners' meeting, it's crucial to recognize the painful truth of history. We stand on the stolen ancestral lands of the Kataba, Ino, Okanichi, Shakori, and Tuscorre peoples, whose deep connection to the land predates our arrival. We acknowledge with humility the unjust displacement and violence that occurred, leading to the dispossession of indigenous peoples from their homelands. Their resilience in the face of such adversity is a testament to their strength and spirit. May we humbly honor the ancestors and elders of these nations, both past and present, by committing ourselves to fostering understanding, healing, and justice for all who inhabit this land. Let us walk forward together with open hearts, acknowledging the past and embracing a future guided by compassion, respect, and unity.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacobs. I want to ask Commissioner Valentine, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Yes, absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Valentine. Are there any agenda adjustments? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Burton, second by Commissioner Valentine. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are, our agenda is approved four to zero. Clerk Wallace, if you want to do announcements?
Good evening, everyone. I will read the announcements published in tonight's agenda. Great news Durham County, everyone is eligible for free school lunches in Durham Public Schools this year. No applications, no hassle, just healthy meals for every student. When we all participate, the program grows stronger and helps every child thrive. You can find out more information by visiting dpsnc.net. Early voting for the 2025 municipal primary election will be held in person at one of five early voting sites from Thursday, September 18th through 3:00 PM on Saturday, October 4th. You can request a no-excuse absentee by mail ballot, fully online, or before September 23rd. Please note that the registration deadline for the municipal primary election is Friday, September 12th. The 2025 primary election will be held on Tuesday, October 7th, from 6:30 AM till 7:30 PM at your assigned poll polling place. For additional information, you can visit dconc.gov or you can also call 919-560-0700. Join Alliance Health and the D code Department of Public Health for a free two-day workshop. This training is an in-person, two-day, all-day training that teaches participants to recognize when someone may have thoughts of suicide or work with them to create a plan that will support their immediate safety. Trainings are on September 11th and 12th, 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM at 414 East Main Street, and there is a link for registration. Staff from the City of Durham and Durham County and the NC DOT and Triangle West Transportation Planning Organization are looking for your input on the Durham-to-Roxboro Rail Trail Plan, a project that aims to establish a 26-mile trail network linking Durham to Roxboro. Take a minute to take our online survey by September 22nd to provide additional feedback on the conceptual designs for the Durham-to-Roxboro Rail Trail Plan. Your input will help us shape a trail that reflects the needs and visions of our community. There is a link for the survey. And lastly, discover the deep roots of Durham with our 2025 Exercise Challenge that celebrates the story of Bull City's history. Track the number of minutes you exercise using our tracker available at South Regional Library or request a printable PDF and you could win a prize. The challenge runs from September 19th through October 31st and trackers will be available beginning Monday, September 15th and are due at South Regional Library by Saturday, Septem, I'm sorry, Saturday, November 8th. For additional information, you can visit durhamcountylibrary.com. And that concludes your announcements in tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Clerk Wallace. Are there any additional announcements? Commissioner Burton?
Yes, thank you Chair Alom. I just want to share that last week I had the opportunity to attend two meetings, conferences. I went to the Families and Communities Rising Community Partner Meeting that was at the Durham Hilton, and it was really good to see so many people in the Durham and Orange County that are helping with Head Start and early Head Start. And they were getting together to make sure that they share resources and one of our staff members, Miles Spann, was there and we were just talking about how the county can be a resource to them. So that was really good. And then also I had the opportunity to attend the North Carolina Transportation Summit in Raleigh. That was my first one, of course, as a new commissioner. It's put on by the Department of Trans, the NC DOT. Really got to learn about transportation, Bus Rapid Transit, the big thing that has, that was being discussed. I went to two sessions on it, is about disaster relief. How, you know, what we have to do to really be prepared, particularly with climate change, things like that. So it was just really good to be at those two events last week. So I just wanted to share that out.
Thank you, Commissioner Burton, and thank you so much for representing Durham County so well in those meetings. Any additional, Commissioner Jacobs?
Thank you. I just want to highlight a program that the county and the city have. There was information in our, in everyone's tax bills for the long-term, the Low Income Homeowner Relief Program, LIHR. Everyone should have gotten a flyer like this in their taxes. And this is a local program. There's also some state programs that are described in the back. We know that a lot of residents are having challenges affording their increased property tax bill. And I just want to highlight it because the enrollment for this program has just started. September 1st is the new enrollment for this program. So please, if you didn't see this in your tax bill, take a look at it. If you know family members who are struggling, or friends or family, to let them know about this program that is funded by the city and the county. And also, I also wanted to highlight our newsletter, the County Manager's Newsletter. There was some really good news this week from Durham Public Schools, that nearly 90% of Durham Public Schools saw growth over the past school year, and that reading, their reading proficiency grades gains in every grade level from third through eighth grade, math proficiency gains in six of seven areas, and also improvements in the end-of-course scores, and that 57 schools earned grades of A, B, or C, with more schools earning an A since 2018-19. And, you know, there's more news about this. I, I just would encourage people to go to either our newsletter or the Durham Public Schools website. It really is something to celebrate. And in conjunction with the fact that, looking at our, the county data, the county maps, which was put out by the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, that Durham County, we are the third highest supplemental K through 12 expense funding that the county provides. First is Dare County, second is Orange, and then Durham. And also, our teacher supplements in Durham. We are the fourth highest after Wake, Chapel Hill, Brunswick County. So it's good to know that our county dollars are being put to good use in our schools. So this is exciting because this is something that we, it's a partnership between Durham County and Durham County taxpayers at our schools. So I just want to celebrate the good news about the scores. Thank you.
And I'll just add one announcement that we discussed at our last Joint City-City DPS, but just want to re-elevate for folks that go Durham now has free micro-transit rides to the Museum of Life and Science, the Durham Memorial Stadium, and other places. They run daily, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and you can request a ride from anywhere in the North Durham micro-transit zone to get to the museum or other areas in there. And if you aren't in that zone, then you can take Route 4 to get there, then request a micro-transit to the museum, and you'll get picked up. It's curb-to-curb pickup. If you have a kid with you, make sure you bring appropriate car seat or booster seat for that ride. But I think that's really exciting and amazing because these are some of our spaces that should be more accessible to all of our Durham County residents, and now they are. So I'm really excited about this city and county partnership to make this happen. That concludes the announcements. Then I will ask for approval of our minutes from our August 25th, 2025 regular session.
So moved.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Valentine, second by Commissioner Burton. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Minutes are approved four to zero. Now we will move to our ceremonial items. First, beginning with our first proclamation that I'll pass along to Commissioner Burton to read.
Thank you. Durham Board of County Commissioners Proclamation, 6/8/2025. Whereas during World War, World War II, President Franklin D. Roosevelt created what ultimately became known as the Women's Army Corps, WAC. And at the urging of First Lady Eleanor Roosevelt and Mary McLeod Bethune, founder of the National Council of Negro Women, African-American women were later admitted to duty. And whereas recruitment of African-American women into the WAC was limited to 10% to mirror the proportion of African-Americans in the greater population of the United States. And whereas a desire to serve in the European Theater of Operations, just as their white counterparts led to the creation in 1944 of a Black Whack Unit, the 6888th Central Postal Directory Battalion, popularly known as the 6/8/88, notably dozens of the women who served on the 6/8/88 were from North Carolina, including Staff Sergeant Mildred Dunn Vizi, Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated. And whereas with upwards of 7 million civilians and military personnel in the European Theater, a backlog of millions of pieces of mail formed and was stored in warehouses in Birmingham, England, the 6/8/88 was charged with reducing the backlog and boosting troop morale. No mail, low morale, by working to sort and route the mail. And whereas the 6/8/88 cleared the six-month backlog in just three months' time, and was next assigned to a clear, a separate three-year backlog in routine France. And whereas the 855 African-American women who served in the 6888th Central Postal Directory Battalion were honored in Washington, DC, at the United States Capitol with a Congressional Medal, Congressional Gold Medal for their pioneering and devoted military service to our country and to servicemen and servicewomen. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Nita Alom, Chair, and on behalf of the Durham Board of County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim, September 13th, 2025- County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim, September thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five, as Six Triple Eight Day in Durham County, and do commend this observation to the families, friends, supporters, and all Carolinians, this eighth day of September, twenty-twenty-five. Signed, Nida Alom, Chair, Durham Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Burton. And I believe we have Dr. Taisha? Taisha? Yes. And the Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated members. If there's any remarks y'all want to share, you can come up to this podium.
Greetings and salutations to the members of the County Commission, members of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, and those in attendance. Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated was founded at Howard University on January sixteenth, nineteen twenty-five, by five college coeds, on the principles of scholarship, service, sisterhood, and finer womanhood. For over ninety years, the members of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated of North Carolina have championed international, national, regional, and both local initiatives to impact the community. As we celebrate our upcoming twenty-twenty-five North Carolina State Leadership Conference at the Durham Convention Center, September eleventh through the fourteenth, we are reminded about the significant impact, influence, and inspiration women have on the lives of families, friends, and the community. We recognize the contributions of our own trailblazer, the triumphant Sore Staff Sergeant Millie Dunn Veezy, a member of the Six Triple Eight, the Central Postal Directory Battalion. Her decision to join the Army and participate in the Whack, or the Women's Army Corp, and serve in World War Two was a finer calling. Millie Dunn Veezy was an American veteran who served in the Army Corp. As a native of Raleigh, after completing her enlistment in the Army, she received her Bachelor's of Art degree from Saint Augustine College and later earned her Master's Degree in Business Administration with a minor in Education and Counseling. She became a member of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated and served on several levels as the Second State Director, the Eighth Regional Director, and the National Board of Trustees. After retiring from the military, she went into teaching business and returned to her alma mater, Saint Augustine. On behalf of the International President and CEO, Dr. Stacy N. C. Grant, our Board of Directors, also our Eastern Regional Director, Amelia Hunt Brichette, and the North Carolina Executive Board and Chair, Lakisha Ross Johnson, and the over twenty-four hundred Zetas, Zeta Amica, Zeta Youth, Zeta Male Network, and members, thank you for taking the time to recognize the special woman and the special day in acknowledging all of the Six Triple Eight in North Carolina and to celebrate their significant contributions to women made here and abroad. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Colmer. Thank you so much to the members of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated for honoring the legacy of Six Triple Eight ladies and making sure that we, as Durham County, but also counties across the state, recognize the incredible contribution that they have made. Additional comments?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Let me first say that I salute the women of the Six Triple Eight Battalion, not only for their service to our nation, but their representation as African-Americans in the combat theater. For too long, they were failed, or we have failed, to give Six Triple Eight their due recognition as combat veterans. In a theater of war, where many African-Americans were denied the dignity afforded their service. And so thank you for being present here today in acknowledgement of that fact. And I would be remiss if I didn't say that my sisters over there from Zeta, you look wonderful tonight and welcome to the chamber.
Commissioner Jacobs?
I also wanted to say thank you all so much for bringing this important proclamation to us, for lifting up a part of history that many people do not know about. Thank you for all you do as Zetas and also for having your conference here in Durham. It's wonderful. And I just want to add that on-- I just had gotten an email about this, that on Saturday night at the annual Historic Russell School, the Rosenwald School in Durham, it's on Saint Mary's Road, the historic school, they're going to be showing a movie about-- the movie that was made about the triple-- the Six Triple Eight. They're going to be showing that on Saturday at-- let me see, what time is it? Well, I can't see what time it is. Oh, seven o'clock. They're showing an outdoor movie there, just to let folks know if they want to learn more about this important history. But thank you so much.
Commissioner Burton?
Yes, I just want to reiterate what my colleagues said. Thank you for, one, having your conference, convention here in Durham. We appreciate that. And also just bringing this important information to us. Zetas have a dear heart of my heart. My grandmother was a Zeta and her best friend were Zeta. They were Zeta sisters. So incredible women. I know Zeta women are incredible women. So thank you so much for coming to our chambers and for us to be able to have this proclamation. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all so much. Would you-- I saw-- would you guys like a group picture in the chambers? Yes. Yes. [laughter] Find the Good Day, which I'll read. The Durham Board of County Commissioners' Proclamation, Junior League of Durham and Orange Counties, Find the Good Day, twenty-twenty-five. Whereas the Junior League of Durham and Orange Counties is dedicated to promoting volunteerism, empowering women, and enhancing communities through effective leadership and action. And whereas, Find the Good Day, observed on September eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five, encourages individuals to recognize and celebrate the positive aspects of their communities and to take action to uplift others. And whereas, on this day, we acknowledge the importance of kindness, compassion, and community service in fostering positive change and building stronger, more resilient communities. And whereas, the Junior League of Durham and Orange Counties continues to play a pivotal role in advocating for significant community initiatives and empowering individuals to make a lasting impact. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Nida Alom, Chair, and on behalf of the Durham Board of County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim, September eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five, as Junior League of Durham and Orange County, Find the Good Day in Durham County, this eighth day of September, twenty-twenty-five. Signed, Nida Alom. We have Ms. Shelby Church here to receive this. Wonderful. Hey Shelby. You want-- yeah.
On behalf of the Junior League of Durham and Orange Counties, thank you for this recognition of our Find the Good Day. Our league is an organization of women committed to promoting volunteerism, developing the potential of women, and improving communities through the effective action and leadership of trained volunteers. This year, our focus is on supporting the diaper bank of North Carolina. Together, our members will package fifteen hundred flow kits, placing more than twenty-two-thousand-five-hundred period products in the hands of students across Durham and Orange Counties. These kits will keep students in school, ensuring they do not miss valuable education time due to lack of access to necessary products. We are grateful for your partnership and for recognizing the importance of this work. Thank you for helping us shine a light on the power of collective action to strengthen our community.
Thank you so much, Shelby. And thank you so much to the Junior League of Durham and Orange County for all of the work and service y'all provide us, the community, our neighbors. It's really valuable to have folks step up and lead and serve in this way. Any additional comments?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And so thank you to, I believe it was, Ms. Shelby, for your presence here today and for the Junior League's commitment to volunteerism at a time when, in our nation, it's becoming difficult each and every day to get people out and to be committed selflessly to the needs of our community. And so to the extent that the Junior League does that and forwards that commitment, we say thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Valentine. Thank you so much, Shelby. Our next item we have is the Commissioner Valentine, I believe you're going to provide comments for?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So the Durham Board of County Commissioners' Resolution, Honoring the North Carolina N double A C P, two thousand twenty-five, the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, was founded on February twelfth, nineteen oh nine, by a multiracial group of activists and is the nation's oldest civil rights organization dedicated to ensuring the educational, social, and economic equality of minority citizens. And whereas, its mission is to ensure and secure equal rights for persons of color in the U.S. and to fight racial injustices. And whereas, the North Carolina State Conference of the N double A C P is led by Deborah Dix Maxwell, who is the first female president in the organization's history, along with Executive Directors Daquan Marcel Love, who is the Executive Director. And whereas, from September twenty-sixth through the twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five, the members of the Durham Chapter will host the N double A C P North Carolina State Convention, attendees at the Hilton Durham on Hillsborough Road near Duke University. And whereas, the local Durham branch of the N double A C P, led by President Dr. Angelo Birch, is pleased and honored to host the eighty-second Annual State Convention. And whereas, the theme of the two-day meeting will be Policy, Power, Prosperity. And whereas, workshops and special activities will include the Freedom Fund banquet, shaping the N double A C P's statewide policy priorities, civil rights, voting, and economic justice, as well as youth and college division sessions. Now therefore be it resolved, that the Durham Board of County Commissioners hereby welcome all leaders and members of the North Carolina Conference of the N double A C P at their eighty-second Annual Convention. Be it further resolved, that we commend the members of the North Carolina N double A C P for their many contributions and achievements, which all attendees in uplifting and productive meeting this eighth day of September, two thousand and twenty-five. Signed, Nida Alom, Chair, Dr. Mike Lee, Vice Chair, Michelle Burton, Commissioner, Wendy Jacobs, Commissioner, and Stephen Valentine, Commissioner.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Valentine, and thank you for bringing this resolution and serving on the executive leadership of the Durham Chapter of the N double A C P and bringing-- I know you played a part in bringing their conference here in Durham. So thank you for that and making a way for us to celebrate. Commissioner Burton?
Yes, so I just want to say, yes, thank you, Commissioner Valentine, for reading that proclamation-- I mean, that resolution. I'm really glad that the North Carolina State Conference of Branches is having their convention here in Durham. I think that's really, really significant. The N double A C P is very dear to my heart. My grandparents and my family were very, very involved with the North Carolina N double A C P. As a matter of fact, my great-grandmother was one of the first members of the North Carolina N double A C P. She joined in the early part of the nineteen-- I think nineteen eighteen or something like that. So I was an N double A C P kid, so it's real-- they do, you know, their work is longstanding. And again, I'm just really grateful that they decided to have their state convention here in Durham. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Burton.
Yes, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention about the economic impact as well, Commissioner Burton. But also, I wanted to recognize Commissioner Burton again. Both myself and Commissioner Burton will have an opportunity to actually bring greetings on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners at the convention, and so I look forward to that opportunity.
Wonderful. Thank you both so much for representing Durham County. That now brings us-- so we have some proclamations as well that the board is signing on to. The Proclamation for Recovery Month, twenty-twenty-five, as well as the Proclamation for World Alzheimer's and Dementia Awareness Day, and Proclamation for Welcoming Week. These are all proclamations that the Commissioners have supported and will be presented at their meetings and events that they're hosting. That now brings us to the consent agenda.
Where we-- I think we have some attendees here for these proclamations who can also talk about some of the events that are associated with the proclamations like Recovery Month, some of the activities. I don't know if anyone's here for Dementia Awareness Day also. I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, you can come up to this podium on the left.
I am Renee Shaw from the Justice Services Department. I am the Mental Health Substance Use Program Manager, and I want to thank you for declaring September Recovery Month. We do have a lot of activities planned for the community, especially for justice-involved individuals at the Justice Services Department. I brought a calendar of events for you all to have. We have things like bird therapy as one of the things. Like, we're trying to get our clients to step out of their comfort zone, learn some new techniques, new coping skills. So that's something that we have planned. We did a play earlier during the month of a skit where it shows the dysfunction of families when faced with substance use. We're also going to join the recovery community of Durham on September the twenty-seventh, where we're going to have a block party to celebrate Recovery Month. And also, just show the clients some appreciation for giving us the opportunity to provide them with the support to recover.
Hi, I'm Mark Strange. I just wanted to take a second to thank the board Durham employees and Durham community and just for their ongoing support of our neighbors in recovery, those struggling to be in recovery, and those families who didn't quite make it to recovery. So I appreciate your ongoing support for that.
Yes, good evening, County Commissioners and neighbors. My name is Adam Hopler. I'm the Chair of the Board of Dementia Inclusive Incorporated, and we aim to build a community culture of well-being, inclusion, health equity, hope, both for persons who are at risk or actually living with dementia and their care partners here in Durham County. Creating this kind of culture requires all of us, though. As an attorney, regularly working with those who identify as friends and family, caring for their loved ones who have been affected by dementia, no longer able to care for themselves, I see the way that dementia creates a void that pulls friends and family in, pulls them away from their community. And when these strong bonds that are needed to be able to survive dementia are not already in place, it is incredibly difficult to make them-- in place, it is incredibly difficult to make them while under stress. I've personally seen this in my own family, to see those bonds of dementia stretching and pulling at each other, but been blessed that our bonds were secure long before. But we want this for all and not just those that happen to have it in advance. So, Dementia Inclusive Incorporated does participate in World Alzheimer's Day each year by holding a forum each in September. In there, we hear presentations, meet in small groups, to make connections among people and organizations that are addressing dementia here in Durham County. This year's forum is September 17th at the Durham Convention Center. It's themed "Empowered Minds." We will have speakers talking about risk management, new treatments, and local support services. I'm excited to announce, but also regret to have to say, that registration has been maxed out, and so we will have to plan for bigger next year. But still, you can go to the website, dementiainclusiveincorporated.org, and find out information generally about it, the resources that are continually trying to be connected, and perhaps look into next year's event as well, if you haven't already registered, and I hope many have. So, again, Dementia Inclusive Incorporated wants to thank our Board for participating in World Alzheimer's Day with the proclamation, recognizing World Alzheimer's and Dementia Awareness Day. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Adam. And thank you so much as well, Mark, as well as Renee, for the proclamations y'all have brought to us and the service that y'all provide to our communities. Are there any additional comments from the Board? Seeing none, then I will move us to the consent agenda. Are there any items the Board would like to pull? There was, oh, I don't have the card. Oh, here. We had someone sign up for 25-0503, so I'm going to pull that one. And if it's okay with the Board, once we approve the consent, if we go ahead and have the public comment on that one before we go to the public hearing, okay? So, that's, would anyone approve, introduce a motion to approve the consent agenda barring 25-0503?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Dr. Lee, second by Commissioner Jacobs. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent is approved. And I'll bring it back to the item number 25-0503. We have Randolph Coley here to speak. Randolph? Then I'll, oh, Randolph? Are you Randolph? Okay.
I know this is old news, but it's the tax assessments. I, as a 75-year-old senior, have grown up in the house I'm in. I'm the third generation, and the tax has just gone out on it, and it's not just me. It's seniors and low-income all over Durham are at risk of losing their homes because of this assessment. I did not ask for all the subdivisions, and I apologize if there's any developers out here. That's not my issue. But they wanted to be annexed into the city for, you know, water and sewer. And one person I did talk to in the tax office said I would not be affected by it because I'm on the wrong side of the tracks. But I am. And when you try to make money come at the end of the year for property taxes, and there is no more money to add to it, it's rough. I don't want to lose it for this, but yet I don't have the money, along with other people who are trying to hold on to their properties to contain them. And that's about what I can say, except sometimes I think, sorry about this, that we elected you to watch for us, but somewhere along the line, it feels like y'all become our boss. In reality, we're your boss. We elected you to watch out. I don't mean to say that as vindictive. It's just a feeling that I have. I've been here before and brought this up, heard nothing from nobody, tried to call and get appointments, couldn't get appointments. I was told just to come to the meetings. I did. Didn't hear anything. And then I finally got ahold of somebody else, and they pulled my properties up, and they said, "My property hasn't changed in almost 100 years. The three houses that are there are almost 100 years old in about two or three years. They were built when Butler was a military camp." So, that tells you how old they are. I don't want to be the generation that loses my home. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Randolph, for providing comment. And I see you've met our tax administrator, that he'll have a conversation with you. Thank you so much, Kiara. With that, I'll bring it back for us to vote, go ahead and have a vote on this item.
I would move forward approval of item number 25-0503.
So moved, I mean, second.
Moved by Commissioner Jacobs, second by Commissioner Brand. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. That now brings us to our public hearing. And today, we have a public hearing to consider the renaming of County Administrative II Building after William V. Bill Bell. And we have Ms. Shannon Trapp to present.
Good evening, Chair Lam, Commissioners, Madam Manager, Madam Attorney. We are coming forward this evening for a public hearing on the naming after William V. Bill Bell. This is a reminder, again, of our naming policy, and some of the highlights in that policy, we bring this forward every meeting just as a reminder, in case anyone needs this information again. This is our naming committee. Many of us are here this evening. Should you have any questions? We originally received the application October 2023. After discussion about the policy, a revised application was submitted and received in August of 2024 to name the William V. Bill Bell Lobby located on the second floor of Admin I, between the Innovation Lab and the Clerk's Office. That request was submitted by Dr. Kristen Belladere, who is with us this evening. The naming is in honor of William V. Bill Bell's service as Durham County Commissioner from 1972 to 1994, as Chair of the Board of the County Commission from 1982 to 1994, and 1996 to 2000. It is worthy noting that his name is listed on a marker outside the elevator on the second floor between the chambers and the proposed lobby. We are not revealing, we are not reading through the recommendation again at this time because the recommendation on this evening is that we will name, from the Commissioners, that we will name the Admin II Building in honor of William V. Bill Bell, and that is what this public hearing is to discuss. Thank you, Chair Lam.
Thank you so much, Ms. Trapp. Before I open the public hearing, are there any questions or comments from the Commissioners for Ms. Trapp? Okay, hearing none, I'll open up the public hearing. And do we have individuals signed up to speak?
We do not have any individuals signed up, but we do have the applicant here if she would like to speak.
If you'd like to, Dr. Adair, you can.
So great to see you all again. I just appreciate you all taking the time to consider naming a building after my father, as that was the original intent behind my application, and I feel that he has done a lot for this community, continues to do a lot for this community, and I appreciate your consideration and nomination. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any?
Sorry, and I would like to acknowledge my mother, who is also very dear, and my family, who's with us as well. And again, I'm Dr. Kristen Von Belladere, Bill Bell's daughter.
Thank you, Dr. Adair. Are there any questions or comments for the applicant? Are there any other additional public comments? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment, period, and bring it back to the Board. Are there any questions or comments before, then I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Burton?
Yes, I would like to make the motion that we name the County Administrative II Building after William V. Bill Bell.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Burton, second by Commissioner Valentine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, five to zero. And I'm sure my colleagues would also like to share comments, but I would just like to, you know, begin by celebrating this occasion and thanking so much the family of Commissioner, former mayor, former Commissioner Bill Bell, especially his daughter, Kristen Belladere, who started this process. We spoke, and you told me about the history of this process. You started back in 2017, so thank you also for your persistence and love that you have carried on in championing this recognition for your father. And it's really great to see that amount of love for a parent and recognizing his service. And I just want to highlight, as I was reading and re-upping my knowledge about former Commissioner and Mayor Bill Bell, I realized that he, when he was first elected in 1972, he was only 31 years old, which is the age I am now. So, I was, really, that stood out to me because it shows how important it is for young people to step up and serve, and Bill Bell really set the example back in the day, and his commitment only grew stronger as the decades went on. So, it's really great to see this legacy come from someone who started at such a young age to serve their community in elected office, and I hope it inspires more young people to step up and run for office and lead their communities and have their voices heard. Commissioner Burton?
Yes, thank you, Chair Lam. I just want to say that this is a very historic moment, about naming this building after County Commissioner Bill Bell, Mayor Bell. And, you know, he set the standard for this. As many of you all know, I came to Durham in 1992, started my career in Durham Public Schools in '94, right when merger occurred, and I remember that time. It was contentious. It was very troubling, and as a young educator, just seeing what was happening in the buildings, with the people talking about moving their children out of Durham Public Schools because they were merged, and he lost his seat, but he came back to serve. And then he became mayor of our city and served 17 years there, 26 years as a county commissioner. And Durham would not be Durham if it wasn't for the leadership of Bill Bell. So, I'm glad that we decided to name the Admin II Building after him because he set the standard, and that's a high bar to go. So, thank you all. Thank you to his family. Thank you to his daughter for leading this.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. To my colleagues, I say thank you. To the Bell family who is with us here this evening, acknowledge your presence, and also say thank you. The naming of the administrative building just across the street is in recognition of a life and a legacy of one William Bill Bell. I dare say that Mayor Bell is a local figure, a state figure, and a national figure. And to many, some who I've had the opportunity to talk to, an international figure as well. His legacy looms large in our community. His tenure as the Chair of the Board of County Commissioners and as the Mayor of this great city remains one, as I would characterize, as being unprecedented in every way. His long tenure also speaks to the trust that the community reposed in his leadership for more than 30 years. Forty years, not 30, 40 years. In fact, I would say that Mayor Bill Bell, in many ways, still serves our community and is making a contribution up until this very moment. If you know Mayor Bill Bell, you know he's very humble, and he probably would not be very excited about what's going on here today. But I could think of no one more deserving for the things that he has done for our communities, his contributions. And so, I say thank you to that life and legacy. And I am completely appreciative of this Board for unanimously voting to change the name of the administrative building to that of Mayor William Bill Bell. And I'd also like to associate my, associate myself with some of the comments made by the Chair of the Board this evening. In fact, it is true that Mayor Bell started his public service at such an early age. And to the extent that that excites young people to get involved early in the process, I am excited this evening. I'm excited this evening because that's exactly what this, this naming stands for, to motivate people in our community to public service. So, again, I say thank you to the Bell family for being here today. Congratulations to Mayor Bill Bell. You deserve it. I yield my time, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Valentine. And vice to Dr. Lee.
So, this is, this is a very historic night, and I too appreciate my colleagues on the dais for making this unanimous vote. I'm coming here today, I didn't bring my laptop or anything. I'm actually coming from driving a bus for some high schoolers who didn't have a driver to a game, so I jumped. But that is service. And the whole time I was driving there and back, I was thinking about this, because I wrote a nice speech. I did last, you know, last meeting, I had a great speech, and I wrote a whole new one, and I didn't have time to come here to, to stop by home to get my laptop before I got I saw a video today on Instagram, and it was this little girl who wanted to buy her dad flowers, and she did, and she gave it to him. And the reason she said she wanted to get him flowers is because she heard that men don't get flowers except for once, is when they pass. This was, this is our opportunity to give flowers to a person who shaped our city and our county in a way to what we recognize it today. I would dare say most of the stuff we could see out of this window, or if we move past the jail, all of that over there, where the new YMC is going to be, American Tobacco, everything is shaped in some way, not only because of Bill Bell, because it's not just one person, but it's the leadership that he showed this area, this city, and this county. I would hope that we all would strive to have an impact on our community. And I know for the millions that are watching who are not here in Durham, you know, all over this nation, they would have impact on their cities and counties also. I'm honored to be a part of this Board at this time, where we can honor Bill Bell for his impact. I've spoken to my colleagues, and years of service is one. my colleagues, and years of service is one thing. But anybody can, as long as you can keep winning elections, you can stay on as long as you want. But you can stay on by just sitting in a seat. It is the impact that you, the impact of the person in the seat is what matters. It's the impact that changes the lives of those around you for the present and for the future. And so when we had this opportunity, it took me a little time to get to actually naming a building. But what led me there is reflecting on the impact of this individual on what we call home. And so I'm honored, I am very happy to see this as a unanimous vote. I am, again, I'm honored to be here on this side of the dais when we were able to make this decision as a group. And I'm really excited about seeing his name on that building. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Dr. Lee. Commissioner Jacobs?
Thank you, and I appreciate all of the comments shared by my colleagues tonight. I, I want to add to the conversation by lifting up Judith, you, as Bill Bell's wife and also his family, because it takes a supportive spouse and your sacrifice over many, many, many decades, I dare say, would not have been possible without you. So I really want to recognize you behind the scenes for all of your support, and also to his daughters and your family as well. And I agree with what my, with what Commissioner Valentine said. The person who would least be wanting this is, 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 you know, former Mayor Bell himself, not one to look out and seek out attention or recognition in any way. When I first became a county commissioner, I will never forget, I've told this story many times because I go back to this over and over again. The very first week was the chamber leadership event. And of course, I was overwhelmed. This is 2012. And, you know, walk into the Washington Duke, and there's Bill Bell looking as relaxed and calm as he always is. And by that time, he had already been serving for decades. And I went up to him, and I was like, "What is your advice to me? You know, how, how do you do it? How do you be so, not be stressed out and be able to do this work for so long?" And he said to me simply, "You take a vote, and then you move on to the next thing, and that's it. And you just, you move on, and you leave it behind. You don't hold any grudges, and you just stay focused on the work." And I really have taken that to heart, and that has meant a lot to me. And then one of his accomplishments, which I would say that he would probably tell you that he is most proud of, which doesn't get talked about a lot, is during the end of his tenure, when he led the effort to try to end poverty, his, his anti-poverty initiative in Durham, where he brought together the city and the county, and he basically voluntold all of the elected officials. He assigned us all to different committees. And I was assigned to the Workforce Committee, and we worked over, we met monthly over at Holton Career and Resource Center. And I, my counterpart on the City Council was Jillian Johnston. And it turned out to be such a positive experience. The Driver's License Restoration Program, which ended up coming out of that work, that has become a hallmark not only of the work in the city of Durham, but has become a statewide initiative. The Driver's License Restoration Program came, came out of that work. And I just wanted to also lift that up because a lot of people don't know about that. And lastly, I'll just say that when I became Chair of the Board, I did have the honor of working with Mayor Bell. And that was also, for me, a great learning experience and a personal highlight. So I'm also glad to be a part of this moment tonight. And thank you to all of his family for being a part of the legacy. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I know we're going to have probably an event of some sort or for the unveiling of whenever the renaming is, that I think Shannon and our team will make sure that the family knows, and it'll be advertised out to the community to join and celebrate with us as we unveil a new name. Thank you all. With that, that is the conclusion of our meeting. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, I rise to make a motion that we adjourn.
You scared me there.
So moved.
I was like, well, it's coming.
So moved. I mean, second, second, second.
Second, aye.
Moved by Commissioner Valentine, second by Commissioner Burton. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned, five to zero.